Well, good evening.
Steve.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's good. Well, welcome. Today is October 21st, am I right? October 21st, 2019. And it's always nice to have a good crowd here at a county commission meeting and tonight is no exception. We're glad that you're here. We hope that you find your time here profitable and interesting and educational. And so, we do appreciate you taking your time to be here. It's the tradition of this board and boards all across the country. We begin with a couple of things. We're gonna have a pledge. Before we do that, we're gonna have a chaplain come forward and we're gonna do what's called a solemnizing prayer. And a solemnizing prayer means it's not for you, it's for us. What we do here, we take very seriously and we ask for wisdom as we make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone in Rowan County. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, thank for this privilege to be here tonight. We thank for our county commissioners, Lord, and the preparation they've made for even this meeting tonight. As always, they're prepared and we thank for that, dear Lord. Pray for the wisdom that they might receive it from you tonight, this meeting tonight. Thank for their dedication and love for Rowan County, Lord. Blessings upon them tonight as they have this meeting tonight. Thank you for the privilege that we can be here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chaplain Taylor. Always glad to have you here with us. All right, commissioners, the agenda is before you. I've got a couple of adjustments to the agenda. Let's see, we're gonna add a closed session. We'll call that item 6A. Item 6A, closed session. We will also add a report from Rowan County educators and that will come in as item 4A behind the financial report. Item 4A. Does anyone have any other adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then the minutes have been provided for us from September 16th. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is before us.
Two sets of minutes.
Two sets of minutes. Boy, it was wooden. We have a motion to approve October 7th, 2019 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank counsel. Then, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we've got some good things tonight and so, we'd like to talk a little bit about retiring library director. We talk about him all the time though, so this is nothing different. Jeff, how about coming up for us? We've got, I tell you what, I'm gonna come, why don't we come around here for Jeff, okay?
I made it.
You made it? You hadn't made it yet.
I almost.
Jeff was hired on March 1st, 1988 as a circulations librarian trainee. You made it all the way to senior circulations library trainee, didn't you?
I did.
On January 1st of 91, Jeff was reclassed to librarian 2 and then in 1995, reclassed again to library services manager. And then on March 31st, 2007, was promoted to library services director and has served in this capacity for over 12 years. He enjoys farming and currently farms part-time. What do you grow, Jeff?
Trees and hay.
Trees and hay. He can hardly kill those, can you? Trees and hay.
Cattle.
And some cattle. Jeff enjoys farming and he currently farms part-time. He plans to increase the time he spends farming after he retires. He will also work part-time with his two sons' electrical contracting business. But most importantly, he's looking forward to his grand, spending time with his grandchildren. How many grandkids you have?
Yeah, I'm waiting.
Oh, you're looking, oh, you're looking forward to grandchildren, not spending time with them. Do we need to pass a resolution for some grandchildren to come along? Okay. Well, Jeff, I've not known you but for a few years and I appreciate what you've done for Rowan County, for our library, for the passion that you have for learning and for reading and for the leadership you've shown over in Cleveland, for bringing that library to us, for the Friends of Rowan County Library and the leadership role you've had in that. And I tell you, your mark is gonna be left on generations to come because of what you've done because education and reading is really the key to success in life and you've had a huge part of that. And so, we really appreciate you. Anyone like to say anything?
Jeff. Well, Jeff, I appreciate all you've done and until I got here, I really didn't know how much people use the library, but you've shown me a lot of the things that you guys do are very important to the community. And all of the, well, I'll say all the employees I ever talked about or talked about you, I've said that you've been a great boss and you've been very good servant for the people of the county and I appreciate all you've done for us.
That's good. Yeah. I'll say something. That's great.
Well, Jeff, you know that the library in Cleveland would not have happened without you. And as a former resident of Cleveland, just growing up in elementary school, I can remember that was one thing we didn't have. We had a little library off to the side of the cafeteria that probably wouldn't hold 500 books, but you know, since I couldn't read or write anyway, it didn't make any difference. But I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate your persistence and I appreciate you pushing this agenda item forward for us because without you, this would not have happened and I'll tell everybody that. And thank you very much and good luck growing your trees.
I've known Jeff since you were in the sixth grade.
That's right. This is my sixth grade teacher, man. He was really good, a great teacher too. Only did it one year, but it was a great teacher.
As I told Dr. Moody, I'm an expert in education. I taught for 18 months.
Oh, it's a little old.
And so, yeah, I had more influence on folks than just you. But Jeff was, I was, I went in the library one day to check out a book and this guy was at the counter and he looked at my card and I didn't have anything overdue for once and he was asking me, you know, are you the Jim Green that taught at Landis? And so, today, I'm very proud of you. I feel like Methuselah up here, knowing that you're old enough to retire. But Jeff, it's been, it's been really great working with you the last, what, five years now, I guess, up here. And you've been a wonderful asset to the county and we're just so proud of what you have done up here with the county.
Well, Jeff, come over here and let's, let's present this to you. Presented to Jeff Hall in recognition and gratitude for 31 years of outstanding leadership and exemplary service to the citizens of Rowan County, including over 12 years as library director from 2007 to 2019. And for his dedication, enthusiasm, and vision in providing quality library facilities for the enrichment of all, from the grateful Rowan County Board of Commissioners this 21st day of October, 2019. So would you all stand and honor Jeff with your thanks?
I wanna thank this Board of Commissioners, our county manager. You've been great to work with, all of you. I wanna thank the staff of Rowan Public Library. Without them, none of this would happen. The reason I stayed over 30 some years is because of that staff because they are good people and they are dedicated people. And you have a great new director coming in place who will do a job that will make mine look like it was nothing. She's gonna do a great job for you. So I just wanted to take that time to thank that staff and say, I have been truly blessed. And so, I'm leaving on a good note and I think you all are gonna be in good hands. And thank you for this recognition.
Well, thank you, Jeff. All right. All right. EMS folks, so if you'd come forward.
Chairman, commissioners, when Chief Solis put tonight's recognition on the agenda, he had intentions of being here, but he had some unexpected travel. So we've brought staff to provide the recognition. I'm gonna keep my comments brief because I have laryngitis and it's a little difficult to talk. What I'd like to do is yield the floor to Battalion Chief Bradley Dean, our training officer. He'll talk about the award that we're recognizing that everyone for. And then Battalion Chief Daniel Robinson, he's our medical responder coordinator who works with the guys that are getting the recognition tonight. And I think Lieutenant Todd Holderfield is gonna assist him in handing out certificates. We'd like to recognize the ones that are here and get a group picture afterwards with you. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
The American Heart Association Mission Lifeline is an effective, efficient program that saves and improves lives. It helps communities and regions form effective coalitions of hospitals, ambulance services, non-transport medical first responder agencies, emergency communication centers, emergency medical service regulatory and medical direction agencies, and local government. Rowan County EMS system comprehensively, including the first responder agencies, Rowan County EMS Division, and the franchise agencies, achieved at least 75% adherence for the same consecutive 24-month interval over 2018 for adored-to-device time with the hospitals of less than 120 minutes for patients that were suffering myocardial infarctions. In addition to meeting this requirement, the EMS system also achieved at least 75% on the 2019-plus measure for out-of-hospital cardiac arrest patients. Rowan County Emergency Services EMS Division would like to recognize the following agencies for their contribution in helping achieve the 2019 Mission Lifeline Gold Plus EMS Achievement Award. The franchise agencies, Rowan County Rescue, New Care Carolina, Rowan Division, Rowan County 911 Communications. First responder agencies, Salisbury Fire Department, Ridgefield Meisenheimer Fire Department, Atwell Fire Department, Boston Heights, China Grove, Cleveland Community Fire Department, East Gold Hill Fire Department, East Spencer Fire Department, Ellis Cross Country Fire Department, Enigville Fire Rescue, Faith Fire Department, Franklin Fire Department, Granite Quarry, Landis, Liberty, Locke, Miller's Ferry, West Rowan, Pool Town, Rockwell City Fire Department, Rockwell Rule Fire Department, Rowan Iredale, Scotch Irish, South Salisbury, Spencer Fire Department, Union Fire Department, Woodleaf, and Kannapolis. Without the assistance of these agencies, we would not be able to achieve the appropriate times and have the assistance to do everything that we need to do for some of these patients.
I tell you, there's always a question about the role of government, but certainly, life safety and public safety is number one in our book. So as you look up here and see the, these folks represent just a small part of the emergency services folks, many of them voluntary, that serve our community. And so, we're just really proud of you. Commissioner Pierce and I are especially happy to see Johnny up here because I think I heard that this has to do with heart attack response. So we live in his area, so we're really glad to know they have a good response for heart attack in case, in case they get the call from Commissioner Pierce's house or mine. But we do appreciate you guys and ladies and know that you sacrifice a tremendous amount for your families at night and the middle of the night whenever the call comes. And you guys are just heroes in our book and that's, that's a sincere appreciation to you guys. Anything else from y'all?
Well, I'd just like to reiterate that in this day and time when it is so hard to find people to do anything, a lot of employers are even having a hard time filling jobs and we get these type of people to represent us, these type of people that will put down whatever they're doing and call and come to, to our aid at day or night, whenever it's needed. And we just, we appreciate what you do so much and this recognition tonight is well-earned and we just thank you for what you do, year in and year out.
John, I hadn't seen you since that car was in my backyard turned upside down about a month ago. I just wanna recognize this group as the largest group in the county that gets paid less than the county commissioners. Appreciate everything y'all do. I know it's a dedicated job and I know it's a hard job, especially the training. And I want you to know that this commission has always been here to give you what you needed to take care of our citizens and we do appreciate it.
Just thanks for all you do. You know, I look at this group and it reminds me of what this country was founded upon, the great patriotic spirit that we have. You guys go out and you work hard for the fellow citizens. You don't ask for a lot. You suffer and you sacrifice and a lot of times, people don't understand the strains that's on you and your families and the things that you have to go through. And I thank you all for that. You make me very proud of our county and all the great work that you do. And so, thank you very much.
All right, we're gonna move ahead in our meeting, so item number two, item number three, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No public comment. Item number four, our financial director, Leslie.
The first financial report shows annual cumulative revenue comparisons and you can see that in the month of September, we rebounded quite nicely. So through the month of September, we had recorded revenue of 53.6 million and that represented 36% of our budget. The prior three years, at the same time of year, we had 35% of budget. The next spreadsheet or graph shows annual cumulative expenditure comparisons. And through September, we had spent 31.6 million and that represented 20% of our budget, which is the same as the prior three years. So, right, right on target. The next graph shows the cumulative current year property tax collections. Of course, this is money that came in in July and August and we record one month later. So, this is, we had collected 46.8 million, which was 55% of our property tax budget and that's the same as in the prior three years. And the next graph shows annual cumulative sales tax comparisons. In the month of September, we received our last receipt for the prior fiscal year. So now, we have a full year and all we collected 26.6 million, which was actually 106% of budget. And it was an 8% increase over prior year receipts.
It's about what, is that, is that about what your projections were? Is an eight, or was that an 8% increase above your projection?
So, we came in for last fiscal year, 6% above the budget for that year. And so, our budget, so we collected 26.6 and we actually, this year, budgeted 6% increase.
And you had eight.
And we had eight. Yep. And the final slide just shows monthly sales tax. And so, the last month of the year for June, we received 2.4 million. Same period a year ago, it was 2.3 million. That concludes the financial report unless there are questions.
All right, any questions for Leslie? Thank you very much. All right, item 4A, let's see, Dr. Carol Spalding, or who's gonna lead off? Dr. Chip Short? Please.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Carl Short. I live at 602 South Fulton Street in Salisbury and I could not be more proud than to serve as Chair of the Board of Trustees at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. There is no other entity in Rowan and Cabarrus counties that is working as hard to move our region forward than your community college. Rowan Cabarrus' leadership continues to be forward-thinking, trying to anticipate the needs of the community at all times. The college remains committed to its mission of building sustainable futures through the power of learning. Moving forward, I believe that Rowan Cabarrus Community College will have an even more significant role in shaping the future of our community. Over the last several months, our college board and administration have been in serious discussions with administration and members of this Board of Commissioners, the administration and board of Rowan Salisbury Schools, Catawba, Livingstone, and our economic development professionals about aligning our aspirations and opportunities as we face the future. We have been looking at a project, the scope of which includes an estimated 105,000 square feet of new construction and renovated space, which, I'm sorry, all our firefighters left us, but I wanted to let them know that we are including a firefighter's decontamination station. The project we're looking at is anticipated to be completed by the fall of 2024 and based on a concept by Bogle Architects and Harris Cost Estimators. The estimated cost of this complex is $45 million. The Board of Trustees of the college unanimously passed a resolution during our September board meeting and we are asking your support for a new technology education complex that will address the community's career and technical education needs through a bond referendum. The resolution that was unanimously adopted states, "The Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees request the Rowan County Board of Commissioners place a bond referendum on the March 2020 ballot for construction of North Campus facilities in support of expansion for career and technical education programs, which includes a technology education complex for Rowan Cabarrus Community College. We appreciate your support of this effort and at this time, I would like to call on President Carol Spalding, who will provide additional information."
There we go. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your leadership, Chair Short. Good evening, commissioners. We're very pleased to be with you tonight. It's an exciting night for us. It was great to see all of the EMTs and firefighters here. We do a really great job training them. We're the largest fire training center in the state. So, we're here tonight to talk to you about a real need and to have you join with us as we align with our partners, some of whom are here tonight, to build a more sustainable future for Rowan County. So, we believe in building sustainable futures, futures full of promise and opportunities for individuals and for the community. The college is committed to preparing the workforce for the future and to ensuring that our residents can become more prosperous. In a time when unemployment is low, we're pleased to report that the college's enrollment is up 6%. The college is now the eighth-largest community college of the 58 around the state. And so, we continue to grow.
I'm glad it's Craig and not me doing the technical stuff. There we go.
Just the power. Curse her down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your leadership, Chair Short. Good evening, Commissioners. We're very pleased to be with you tonight. It's an exciting night for us. It was great to see all of the EMTs and firefighters here. We do a really great job training them. We're the largest fire training center in the state. So, we're here tonight to talk to you about a real need and to have you join with us as we align with our partners, some of whom are here tonight, to build a more sustainable future for Rowan County. So, we believe in building sustainable futures, futures full of promise and opportunities for individuals and for the community. The college is committed to preparing the workforce for the future and to ensuring that our residents can become more prosperous. In a time when unemployment is low, we're pleased to report that the college's enrollment is up 6%. The college is now the eighth-largest community college of the 58 around the state. And so, we continue to grow despite the fact that the jobs are plentiful out there. Many students are pursuing their education. As the community's public higher education institution, the Rowan Cabarrus Community College joins with our educational and economic development partners to encourage our citizens to raise the educational aspirations for themselves, their families, and for their fellow North Carolinians. Aspirations are important, of course, but they are not enough. Each of us must enable these dreams by earning industry-valued certificates, or degrees, or diplomas. Last century, and that's hard to say, but last century, a high school education was qualification enough to prepare for the textile factory jobs at the time. This century, 20%, excuse me, 70% of all jobs will require more than a high school education. This century, now, we must challenge the myth that a high school education is good enough and resolve to develop the talent needed for the future. We are here to dedicate our efforts to developing more educational opportunities and options for local careers more than ever before. Though we've made great strides working together, producing an increasing number of associate degree graduates who transfer to colleges and universities, we know that some students prefer another path. Their goal is for higher education, but higher in this case is spelled H-I-R-E. These options have been limited by our inadequate capacity and facilities devoted to career education, sometimes called trades or vocational ed. In our work aligning the college and the school system to provide college courses to our high school students, including early college high school, the coursework has been focused on traditional college degrees. Meanwhile, the region has a great need for technical trades, in automotive careers, machining, and welding, to mention a few. Rowan Cabarrus Community College has limited resources to provide training for these high-paying jobs. We know that internships and apprenticeships are great career starters, and we are increasing those opportunities. We have a great example in our student, Mark Hill. He was in an internship while he was at the college and graduated at the top of his class. His internship offered him a full-time job, and he's been promoted twice since. So, since 2018, his life has really changed, from a laid-off worker to now a fully-employed and great participant in this community. When asked what his degree meant to him, Mark shared what started out as a financial need to get a job turned into a life-changing, leadership-development, career-building journey that literally has transformed our family's future. Tonight, we're here to advocate on behalf of students like Mark, students who need higher education, H-I-R-E. I should talk for a minute about the facilities needs at the college. We have a welding lab that's overcrowded with 29 students. Our faculty know we could train 75 or more if we had the space and equipment. And I'm pleased to have Brandon Hefter with us, who's our welding teacher, and he can answer any question you have about welding, which frankly, I cannot answer. We have employers who want a higher-skilled workforce, and we have people and high school students who want to learn job skills. The school system polls their students every year to find out what they want to do, and about 600 of them want to go into automotive careers. We're missing the facilities and equipment to meet the demands of this century's career and technical education. It's time for the college to request funding for facilities to house our important trade programs. As you know, in North Carolina, the county is responsible for building and maintaining the college's buildings. The Rowan Cabarrus Community College receives 8% of the educational budget of the county, and the school system receives 92%. So, it will take a bond issue to build this project. We were surprised during our research to discover that the last classroom building the county funded at North Campus was 43 years ago. We think we're due. The community college needs additional space to prepare students for high-wage, high-skill jobs such as robotic and virtual welding, advanced machining, and industry-recognized automotive repair and paint, and auto body training facility. A new facility will encourage and inspire students and parents to consider career and technical education as a better alternative for them than a two- or four-year degree for people who want to work with their hands. This century, we're embracing our 1960s roots as a tech college. We started off as Rowan Tech, you might remember. But we do not want to change our name back. We want to change your mind. We want to change everybody's mind in the community about the value of career and technical education. The entire community will benefit as embraces the new H-I-R-E education. As college students earn credentials that matter, they will bring home more income to support their families, they'll pay more taxes, and the region will become more prosperous. Currently, our over 600,000 alumni add more than $335 million in additional income due to their graduation and their higher-paying jobs. This is a great bargain for return on investment, considering that the college's budget itself is $40 million a year. The more career and college promise students, the more career education and technology students that we have, the higher those salaries will go, and the more prosperous we'll all become. So, in closing, the bond issue request is for an amount less than what we would spend on a new high school. And the return is much more immediate because graduates are able to get local jobs in a short period of time. The cost of tuition at any community college in North Carolina is less than $3,000 a year, and our students are able to graduate free of debt. We're excited to share our vision of the future and build the resources that will benefit the current workers and high school students as well. This project will truly be a symbol of a new and better future. At this time, I would like to introduce the college's Vice President of Corporate and Continuing Education, Craig Lamb, who is serving as the facilitator of the collaborative in addition to all of his duties in the workforce. So, I'll get this up. Okay, Craig.
It's a pleasure to be in front of you again to talk about my favorite thing, workforce development. And this is our opportunity, not just tonight, but this whole idea of a bond initiative is our opportunity to invest in the future. And so, one of the things that Chairman Short mentioned was the fact that we've been working with a group of dedicated citizens from across Rowan County that represent different institutions and different parts of the workforce development and economic development world to align our educational strategies. And we want to talk about that here real briefly because that's an important aspect of how this project works and what its primary objectives are. So, what you see on your screen is a piece that we have that describes our framing question, which says, "How can Rowan County," wow, okay, it's from, "How can Rowan County create an agile talent framework that promotes prosperity in business for both businesses and residents?" The reason we ask that as a question is that we know that everyone in the community has an answer to that. We have an answer to it, but we're working together with our colleagues at Livingstone College, at Catawba College, at the Rowan Salisbury School System, at Economic Development, to develop a comprehensive strategy towards talent development. And this is an important aspect of this. So, this, this bond initiative, this strategy for investing in technical career education is an important move towards, towards meeting these established goals, which include increasing the educational attainment rate of Rowan County to exceed the national averages, where it lags behind now, to double the number of occupational and career education completers at both the high school and adult levels, to provide career-focused engagement opportunities through work-based learning for all students, to increase the placement rate of graduates from Rowan County institutions with Rowan County businesses, and to leverage Rowan County's community assets in education to foster a culture of education. This group has been working together for several months to develop this strategy, and we're promoting ways to achieve all these goals. But we wanted to make sure that you understood that it's our belief that this bond initiative and this project align completely with this strategy and help us execute on many of these Another thing that's important, so part of my job up here tonight is to not only talk about the need for this project, which Dr. Spalding and Chairman Short did so eloquently, but to also talk about exactly what it means for people, what kinds of training programs we would offer, and how we would offer them. And that's, but we want to start with identifying these student markets. Whenever we talk about the community college, it's easy to get focused on one population or another. And we have three distinct markets that we serve. Those are the emerging workforce. Those are our high school students who are coming out of high school and maybe taking college courses at the same time, or who will go directly from high school as traditional college students into the community college. We have, but we also have the incumbent workforce. It's often not thought of when we think of the school, but those people are out there every day. What's our unemployment rate right now? 3.5%? Give or take? 4%? That means that 96% of the people in Rowan County are already working somewhere. And so, those are the incumbent workforce. So, those people who are working somewhere, when it's time to upgrade their skills to increase productivity at the place where they work, to move up to a different career, to take those three part-time jobs that they have now and consolidate them into one benefits- earning, wage-positive job, and then upskilling and reskilling themselves to be able to be productive. And then also to think about those transitioning workers, those people who lose their jobs because of dislocation, or offshoring, or rightsizing, or downsizing, or whatever the euphemism is for today. It all boils down to the fact that people lose their jobs because they don't want to, and also because they want to. They're in the midst of a career change, and that they want to move. So, that transitioning workforce is important as well. So, understanding that there are these three markets that we're trying to serve with this project, and understanding that it's important for us to be able to provide benefit to all of them and to our business community at the same time, is an important aspect of understanding the comprehensiveness of this proposal. Our, our partnership with the Rowan Economic Development Corporation is strong, and we sit often at the table with them to talk to prospect firms or expanding firms. And, and the number-one topic to come up is talent. How will we find the people to fill the jobs that we're creating? And how can we attract the kinds of jobs that we really want for our community if we don't have the people to be able to fill those jobs? So, when we're competing for new firms, when we're retaining our existing firms as they compete with global competitors, and as they grow and introduce new technology, as we attract those next-generation firms with new technology and, and new products and new processes that we don't know what they are yet, we need to be able to address the question head-on with every prospect and, and every growing business in Rowan County to be able to answer that question that we asked earlier. How will Rowan County develop a talent, a comprehensive and agile talent framework? Well, this is one way to do it. But we do know that workforce is the key decision factor for a lot of our economic development decisions, whether they're for existing companies or prospective companies here. And we need to be able to respond to that with the kinds of talent that they need and the kinds of high-tech skills that they need. So, one of the mechanisms for doing this are academies. And our partners at the Rowan Salisbury School System work with us to develop a lot of programs that help students while they're still in school participate at the college level to achieve that level of education that Dr. Spalding mentioned, which is the fact that jobs, to meet that standard of jobs that require more than a high school education. But so, how can we have students leave high school with that level of education? You're all familiar with our Early College, which has a lot, has 240 students who are achieving their high school diploma and their associate degree simultaneously, so they can transfer to a four-year institution and complete a baccalaureate degree in two years. But there are also the students that Dr. Spalding talked about that need career and technical education, that need, that are preparing for technical careers. And so, this partnership, this, this facility, or these facilities, this investment in, in the bond initiative will help us meet these kinds of standards. These will help us to provide on-campus experiences for high school students to be at the college part of the day, but still to be able to participate fully in their home high school. They don't have to make the same kind of commitment to be able to go into the Early College. As you know, when a student enters the Early College, there's no football team, there's no band, there's no debate club, there's no extracurricular activities. They make a full-fledged commitment to be in that class. That's great for a lot of people. For the other students, we need to be able to provide opportunities for them to come to the campus and learn some of the skills that I'll be talking about later when we talk about the specific programs. But all those programs and all those academies are built around employer demand, and so we call this an employer-demand-driven system. So, all of these systems are, all these programs are the same programs that we hear about in the Rowan Salisbury School CTE Advisory Committee, for instance. We hear them from our employers, as our business services team at the college works with them. They're the same demands that we hear from the employee retention group at the Economic Development Corporation. But this allows students to participate at their home high school and participate at the college level while they're still high school students. So, what kinds of programs are those? And so, you see the titles of them here. Some of them are some that Dr. Spalding had mentioned already. Welding, we talked at one point with a group about the fact that we might be able to add between 50 and 70 new welding stations, okay? When, when people don't know where we are already with that, a lot of times they say, oh, 50 or 70. If, they don't know that we don't have 300 already, and that's a smaller increase. We have 29 right now. We have 29 stations to train welders at. Our ability to expand that, regardless of the interest level in that incumbent workforce or in the emerging workforce from the high school, is zero. She also mentioned the fact that Rowan Salisbury Schools had conducted a survey of students in the high schools, and that 610 of them had indicated some interest in some kind of automotive-related program. Our automotive-related program has 12 slots, not 12 additional slots, 12 slots. So, a lot of students won't have the ability to get into those jobs as we, as we know that the dealerships are looking for technicians to move to electric vehicles and to move to alternative fuel vehicles and to do the new complex systems and cars, let alone the collision-repair kinds of programs. We also see fire protection technology. Our, we have a fire technology academy already established with Rowan Salisbury Schools, but the ability of those students to learn all the latest technology will be enhanced by this bond initiative. You can see in the right-hand column the fact that every one of these programs that's proposed as either direct benefit from this bond initiative, or as a spinoff, as a backfill from some of the space that we might vacate, all can have high school-based programs as a linkage to a profitable career. Want to move on to that, or do you want me to say anything else at this point? Okay. Let me just finish up with this? Okay, I will. This, again, is the resolution that Chairman Short referred to, which is in its whereas-and- here-to-fours in front of you, but this is the be-it-resolved piece at the end that says that we're at, that the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees comes before you as one duly-appointed board, to this duly-appointed and elected board, to ask for support for a referendum on a ballot in March to support a bond initiative to fund fully this activity to support career and technical education for Rowan County. We're prepared to answer any questions, because I'm sure you've got a lot, so. Or maybe not.
Or maybe not.
I'll, I'll make some, some statements. So, this issue came up maybe six months ago. And Vice Chairman Green and I saw this as a great opportunity for the county, frankly, to try to bring some influence to the, to the education side of what's going on in the community. And one thing that we wanted to see was that there was alignment. That's the word. I- That's the word. I've heard of folks that each year adopt a word. I've never been that bright to do that. But for whatever reason, this year, that word came to my mind, which was aligning everything that we do, from the activities that we all have, to really a central goal of improvement here in the county. And one thing that's been on my mind a lot is educational alignment. And so Dr. Spalding and Dr. Moody really took that challenge on, and probably, I don't know if it's been four or five months ago, the two of these educators pulled together, not only decision-makers from Rowan Cabarrus and the school system, but have also involved the EDC and leadership there, private sector, Livingstone College, Catawba College, to have a discussion about how do we align our educational goals. And I wrote down one thing that Craig Lamb had in his presentation. For employer-demand-driven, it's got to be employer-demand-driven, not just teaching kids and giving them certificates as they leave, but giving them opportunity when they leave, so that the things that are being taught are a result of demand in the community. There's not many people I respect as much as Craig Lamb, and Craig introduced me to a term a couple of years ago called silos of excellence. And if you think about that, that's a pretty funny term. But as all of us are working in our individual silos to try to make things better, a lot of times, we don't work together. And so the purpose of these conversations were to keep the excellence part, but to break down the silo part, so that we saw a very clear purpose from kindergarten, and we would call it clear up through retirement. Because people are displaced, and so how do we deal systematically? How do we set up a framework to assist those people from kindergarten clear up through the age of retirement? And that's one thing they've been working on. This is not about a building, or a series of buildings. This is about a new mindset in Rowan County. It is about changing the education culture in Rowan County. As a commissioner, everyone that's here, up here, has had the opportunity to sit with economic development as companies come here to talk to us about moving their company, maybe all of their operations or part of their operations here. And we, the questions we have for them is tell us about the trained workers that you need, what do you need? And we find out a lot of the times that we are not aligned with what folks are looking for. And so we don't expect them to change what it is they're looking for. We expect for us to change what we are offering and what we're providing, and this is a response to that. I often say if we want higher-paying jobs, that we have to have highly-trained students, and this is recognizing that fact of changing the mindset in Rowan County to begin to address employer-demand-driven jobs. The fact is, Rowan County is like a lot of communities across the country. We are losing our kids to other communities. And everyone sitting up here would like to see that stop. I have three kids, and two of them live out of Rowan County. One lives in Charlotte, one lives out of state, and one lives here. And, you know, I'd like to see my grandchildren grow up here. But as we go out and we have opportunity to talk around the community, we often ask the question to young kids, what are your plans after graduation? And most of them will tell you they're not considering coming back to Rowan County after graduation. And it's because they have, whether it's real or perceived, they don't see opportunity here. And I think the most important thing we can do as leaders, not just up here, but leaders that are here today, is to begin the address, to address the issue of bringing real opportunity, great opportunity, to Rowan County, so that our kids will want to live here, graduate here, get jobs here, buy homes here, worship here, pay taxes here, and raise their children here. And to do that, we have, we have to provide a skill set from our workers and from our kids that attracts better, higher-paying jobs to the community. We've done that in the past, and we're doing it now through efforts that we've done in cooperation with the community college. One, through the North Carolina Manufacturers Institute. One, through Better Jobs for Better Lives. I heard last week Vice Chairman Green talk about Better Jobs for Better Lives, touched 700 of our citizens in Rowan County last year, and that's spectacular. But it's time not to be thinking about taking big steps. It is time for us to begin to think about taking big leaps. And I know we are all busy all the time trying to figure out how to move Rowan County forward, and a lot of times, I find out we're just playing catch-up. And it's time for us to stop playing catch-up. It's time for us to step out and become a leader in this region, and to start giving our kids the tools that they need to live productive lives, to live lives that are profitable, and to be able to recruit companies here that pay high-paying jobs. And so this is what this is about. This is about equipping folks for the future. And I just want to say I appreciate Lynn Moody being part of this. She's been at all the meetings. Susan Cox has been there, other board members have been there, Jim Green has been to all of these, of course, the folks that have been here. But a whole roomful of folks has been every two weeks we have met. And in the off week, they have all left with tasks to do, and they're meeting, for example, the provosts of all the colleges now meet every week to talk about how do they coordinate now with one another to make their organizations work better together as an aligned unit. I want to thank Dr. Jenkins, and Pete Teague, and Brian Lewis, and his team for being part of this, because it can't stop at the K through 14. It has to go through K through 16. And so this is a big group effort, and this will take a big commitment on the part of the taxpayers of Rowan County. But we believe that this is, Jim and I have talked, and I think with all we've got our hands in, I actually believe this is the most important thing we will have done in our time as county commissioners, is to begin to align our community for the future. And so that's all, I say all I have to say. I've said about all I know. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike. No, I'd just like to say, oh, what, first or second year that we were here, we started, we had a little tax money that came back to us, and we started a program to try to educate folks. And our job, we thought, was to take it out to different parts of the community and work with Rowan Cabarrus to train folks, and to get folks that didn't have a job, or if they had part-time jobs, to get a full-time job. And that program's still working. We now call it Better Jobs for Better Lives in Rowan County. But what I found out in this process is that changing educational expectations, meaning getting kids out of high school, getting them into some sort of secondary education, changing the culture for folks that don't do that, is the hardest thing I've ever tried to do. We have had numerous meetings on this, Greg Lamb and myself and other folks in the community, and it is difficult to give folks an idea of what their future can look like. Your circumstances are only temporary through education. You can do, you can become whatever you would like if you can just see that future, and you will go out and try to accomplish it. That's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to raise that educational level. We have public schools and Rowan Cabarrus Community College working together to do this, to take kids at an early age, and let them see that college is possible for everybody. Not, we're not trying to give everybody a PhD degree, but we are trying to educate them where they can earn good money. They can, they don't have to have three different jobs making $7.85 an hour. You can do better than that. But you, the general public, the students, have to understand how to do that. All of us want better lives, and this is a way that you can do it. And so I applaud our four-year colleges here for working, and they're going to try to work on accepting a lot of classes that are taken, and if you decide you want to go on to a four-year school, then you can do that. But we're trying to get kids from high school right now to look at their future and what it can be, and then a process that they can go through to make those dreams come true. And then it will be easier for whoever's sitting up here in these chairs to bring in great jobs for this community. But we can only do it with a good, educated workforce, and this, we feel, is the first step in that process.
Thanks for coming out here tonight. You know, I'm kind of excited about the opportunities this could provide for our county. I'm sitting here thinking about how many different regional community colleges I've attended, I think, and at least four, probably more. Sometimes taking classes, sometimes being in programs. I think I've took the lifelong learning thing to extreme. It took me about 15 years to get my first degree, but, you know, it's the whole thing about growing, learning, is to learn your entire life. Makes me think about, you know, my grandfather, he went to, he had one job that he did, and then he went to a community college and learned a whole other skill that he had, that he did on the side. And he always said, you know, you should have multiple sources of income. And so I know all of the, I'm sure there's probably hundreds of children watching this show right now, but if you're out there watching this, you know, I think that's good advice, is to have, you know, multiple tracks and multiple things that you can do. And so, you know, I really look at how fortunate we are to have such a great community college here in our county. The, well, I will take this opportunity to say today some things that Greg said, is that I'm officially old, like the rest of you, because today's my oldest daughter's birthday, so she's 18 now, so now she's an adult, so that makes me old, I guess, if my daughter's an adult. But she's looking at going possibly to Rowan Cabarrus.
Yes, indeed.
Really no, you know, exactly what she wants to do yet, but, you know, it's very fortunate being a county commissioner and working at the lowest level of an elected official, because we get to see a lot of the things that some of the higher-level elected officials don't get to see. A lot of the things that have happened, they happen at our level first before they move up, and I think we are seeing here, personally, the skill gap, and how we need to have citizens that are trained with skills that can do things. Because I see in my job quite often folks that don't have anything. They can't do anything. They somehow got through high school, and they just kind of wander around. And so I think having the opportunity where folks can come and learn these skills, where they can get a job, and actually not look 12, 15 years down the road, but say, hey, you know, I can do this program in six months, or 12 months, or I can get the certificate in three months, and actually have a job, and start a life, and build a path to the future, I think is very important for our community. And I won't even, you start talking about some of the things the upper-level folks will need to look at in the future. I mean, how can we expect to have a country long-term if we don't have anybody that can do anything? I mean, everyone can't sit in an office and push a button on a computer. Everyone can't teach philosophy. I'm sure there's important people to have philosophy teachers. So I think having at least the opportunity, because the great thing about this is it's going to be presented to the citizens, and the citizens of the county will decide whether or not they want this, because it'll be on a ballot, and they can vote for it. And, you know, I think that, and I want to thank everybody here that's worked on this, all the folks in the audience, and all of you guys bringing this to us, because it is an opportunity for our county. And, you know, I think, really, if we want to move forward as a county, it's something we've got to look at. I've been fortunate, at least twice now, I've been able to go out there and, being able to go through and look at some of the facilities out there. And when I first got elected, I went out there seven years, about seven years ago, and went out there recently, and, you know, they're still in the same cramped areas, and they haven't been able to expand, and I think this is going to be really a great opportunity for the county. So I'm excited for it, and, you know, like I said, I've had personal experience going through community colleges, and, you know, before I was able to move up to the graduate level and those other things. So really, I'm excited for this opportunity. Now, I know you're going to have to sell it to the citizens, because that is a lot of money, and we have tried to be a frugal board best that we can, so I'm excited to go forward from here, and let's see where, see where it leads us.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion?
I want to, I want to say one more thing.
Okay.
Because I don't know if we've been specific about this. There's going to be as many as five new facilities, five new buildings. One of them will be a facility for Rowan Cabarrus that will relocate CNC programming and upgrade that. It'll relocate welding and greatly upgrade that. It will relocate automotive, build new automotive facilities. And by the way, most people don't know, we have an agreement with Nissan. So Nissan provides the vehicles. That's a, not everyone can say that, so we have a Nissan program there. But I'm always, I'm always kidding with Dr. Spalding and saying, every time I see her, I say, what's the next big thing? What's the next big thing? And if we knew that, we'd all be rich, and we may not be here, right? We don't know what the next big thing is, but the fact is, when the next big thing comes, we don't have room for it. We have no room for it. So part of that facility will be to facilitate the next big thing. But the one thing that hasn't specifically been spoken about tonight that I think kids will be interested in is we will have a dedicated early college building. We will finally get them out of the pods, right? They'll have their own facility, but the larger part of that facility will be dedicated to CTE and to trades, and this community is demanding and begging for us to go back to the trades, and we're going to be working on that and providing trade school to our kids, and that is a big, big deal. So the other buildings are, other things that I know are important, the fire.
Decontamination.
Decontamination. We've got a lot of, across the country, firemen and firewomen are coming home from fighting fires, and there's a high incidence of cancer. And so being able to train and show these brave men and women on how to decontaminate for their own health and safety is an important thing, and it's just one more added feather in the hat of Rowan Cabarrus and their training school for fire training, the largest in North Carolina, and that's an important thing. And it's important for these men and women that were up here today, and I forgot what the other facility was. This is a big leap, not a big step. This is a huge. This is a huge leap for our community.
Yes, I think it is a big leap and the, the piece that you're missing is the renovation of a small building for the digital media piece, which is connected to the trades. And so we might say it's a trade school, but it's not your grandfather's trade school. Okay, this is the 2019, 2024 version of what is going to take to do these jobs. You know, your mechanic from the 1960s could not fix your car now. Your, your CNC machine operator could not run these machines now because it takes computer code. So in case people think that it's going to be the same thing, it is not. I mean, it's all high-end, it's all math STEM related actually. And these are high-paying jobs with good working conditions and benefits. And so we're very excited to be able to have, to be able to, to expand programs that we know employers want, that we know students want, and we just have to have the space for it. So we're very excited to work with the, the county and to educate people in the county, inform them about what this means and how it will benefit all of us when so many of our students go elsewhere or not, they're going to, maybe they're going to a four-year college, they would really rather do something else. This is not, I mean, it's not, it's an alternative. It's a very good alternative and we need to change our mindset so that this educational process is respected as it used to be. I mean, I don't know if you've played a, paid a plumber lately, but they're making more than the college graduates are. So sometimes, you know, our education gets in our own way. We want to make sure that this is what everybody wants. It's not a one-size-fits-all at all. We offer many things and this will give us an opportunity to offer more to our high schools and our workforce and the talent that's here and that's coming.
All right, Commissioner, so I've, I've got a couple of things I passed out. One is a letter from Maguire Wood, which will be bond counsel for this. The other is the time, the, the timing of, of how all of this works. And so tonight, what we are looking for is, Bond Counsel sent us over a resolution this afternoon, which legal is going through now. So what we, the motion that we're looking for tonight is to direct staff to create resolution for the bond, motion for the bond that would go on the March ballot. And, and so that's what we're looking for tonight, to direct staff to work with Maguire Wood, to have a bond resolution ready for the first meeting in November for us to vote on, okay?
So move.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We look forward to spending more time together.
All right, good.
Thank you. Thank you, team, for the support.
And thank you Elaine for coming and Lynn, Susan, Daryl and, and group. All right, item number five, discussion to amend contract with ADW Architects. Commissioner Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first of all say, I don't have a problem with what we have submitted to ADW on the initial contract. My only concern is, and I've made it quite clear, that included in our outfit of West End Plaza is, is we want to move the Sheriff's Department out there. And it's been through conversations with Leslie Heidrick and the sheriff that we shared. We're showing that we only have approximately $15 million left in our capacity to borrow. And I certainly don't want to short the ag community with what they need, but at the same time, I'm not seeing the numbers stack up that we'll be able to do, the Sheriff's Department and the other outfit that, that you have submitted to ADW. So what I'm looking for is a, is a secondary bid that would give the ag facility at least 13,000 square feet of meeting space, which is four times what they currently have, just in case the numbers don't come back suitable for us to do all projects. And, and I just want to have that information put out there so that we have other options to look at in case the numbers don't come back that we can do this entire project. So that's what I'm asking for. And what I have selected is the four different storefronts that are contiguous to the ag outfit and each one of those walls are a petition wall, they are not structural, so they can be taken out and, and actually make four different meeting areas or petitions can be folded back to make it one larger area. And I just would like to see what that particular floor plan would, would work out to be and what the cost would be on it, as, as something else in case we can't do it all. And that's what I'm asking for.
Let me ask you a couple questions. I was looking at the floor plan that we have and I don't have a copy of the other one, but aren't some of these highlighted areas in the same area where they're trying to build their?
Not according to what they showed us. The area to the right that is left there is where all the Agricultural Extension Agency, the soil and water, wildlife and whatever other department it was, is supposed to be in that area. But if you look to the left of the highlighted area, you can see that there's still three additional storefronts that could be used in case they need some of that space. All I'm looking to do is to have an alternative in case we don't have the money to do everything we need to do.
Right.
And I don't think it hurts to have more information.
No, I mean, information is wonderful. I mean, I'm, and I know this is, I guess was, came up last week and, or you may have been working on it a while and we haven't, we don't have an architect here tonight to look at any of this. Because I'm still a little confused and at first I'm going to say that I don't, I don't have my problem looking at stuff, but I don't want to do anything that's going to stop the wheels of turning that we've already started because I don't want to get, you know, freeze it for six months and now we're six months behind where we are. But I think, are you saying you want a parallel plan to run beside the other plan? So we've got two different?
I, I don't have any problem with the plan that's been presented. That's the first thing I said. I'm just simply saying for the meeting area, I'd like to see what this would stack out to be cost-wise versus the $7.6 million that the other meeting area is going to cost.
So like I said, and you guys are much more, understand how this stuff works than I do because I'm not a builder and an architect or anything like that. But my understanding is that this would change our base bid. So are you asking for two base bids?
No, I'm asking for an alternative.
An alternative to the base bid?
An alternative to what the cost of the meeting, current meeting space that's on the original plan, which came in at an estimate of $7.6 million.
Right, and like I said, and I understand that, but I mean, I realize it's going to be hard to vote, I think, on anything until we get an architect here to ask questions, isn't it? I mean, because, I mean, I still think these are in some of the areas that they're looking at and I know you said you can move it down farther, but I know they spent time talking to the different stakeholders over there of what they needed and how it would fit. And I'm not saying we can't do what you want, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, do we have enough information right now from this to answer those questions of is it going to stop the other process?
It shouldn't.
And then for them to do that, how much, how much additional funds would that cost?
I have no idea.
Okay. So.
I'm simply saying if we're going to spend the last amount of monies that we have to use, I'd like to see just what all we can get for it. And what, what if it comes back, what they stack out is not going to, we don't have the money to do it? Then where are we? I'm trying to put this in play while they're getting started, getting the final development on the other plan, put this as, as an alternative. Because all they got to do is figure this as an alternative. They don't, that doesn't do anything else to the outside areas that are wanting to be done. It doesn't do anything to these office spaces. This is just simply an alternative to the meeting area. It's all it is.
Yeah. And like I said, and I'm still trying to get my head around it. So the other process, we started at, you know, zero and they worked their all the way up till we voted on it last meeting.
Right.
Where are we starting at this process at? Are we starting at zero or are we starting somewhere between?
Starting as an alternative. In other words, they're going to continue doing what they're doing with the other one.
Well, they're designing now. They're drawing up plans now.
Right, but to do this, what you're asking, I mean, don't the architects have to go and bring us more information, you know, because remember we had plans where they showed us drawings and pictures? I mean, is that not?
Well, ours now is broken down into two or three parts.
Three parts.
Three parts.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and there's a, a set amount that we can do for the first two or three.
Correct.
On those. And then if, if we can't accept that, then we could go into what you're wanting to do.
Well, the only, the only thing that I'm looking at, Commissioner Green, is I've been told all along, we want this thing to move forward, want it to move forward, want it to move forward. If they come back with this and we can't afford it, if we don't have an alternative plan already in place, then we're, then we start at ground zero again and that's what I'm trying to avoid.
So you're, for our base bid, which is just the inside items, you're thinking we won't have enough money for just that and not do anything to the exterior, not do anything to the parking lot, not do anything?
I don't know. According to their original figures, we won't not be able to do the Sheriff's Department.
Well, as we, that's a different thing. The Sheriff's Department wasn't in the original base bid.
No.
And I don't know if the sheriff wants to talk about that or not at this point, but I think, you know, there was, you and I had some conversations, went out there and looked into some things and, and I don't know, we voted on something last meeting, what was, that was just for the?
For the sheriffs to put out an RFQ for their architect to design that space.
Yes.
Well, it was kind of to study it, wasn't it? And to determine. I mean, we've had conversations with the sheriff and he's got a, he's got a list of priorities and this is last on his priority list. His first priority is to get the storage facility that desperately needs for.
The evidence, right.
For evidence. And then depending on how things are going, we may have to build jail space and that's, that's an issue that the state will come to us and demand that. Of everything that he says could be a need, new, new office space is last on his list and he's not asking to move to the mall. So I, I think from the, from what I understand that we did last time was if the sheriff needs new office space, let's start to study that and see what would be the best thing for him to do. Not to throw him into the mall and not give him any say on that, but to, to try to figure out where would the best place be to, to put him? It may end up being at the mall, but I, you know, I'd, I'd want some folks to study that and determine where's the best location for him. As far as this goes, we're still back to, in my opinion, and it's not worth much, you know, we, we've been talking about this since 2015. We did a space need study and then we did a mall master plan. And during the mall master plan, we spent, or ADW spent a tremendous amount of time talking to stakeholders from all around the county. And they, they had almost unanimously identified the Belk Building as a great asset for the community to create some kind of space that we could have meetings and events and, and try to attract different events here. And so that's what we've been focused on is, is the Belk Facility. If what we're trying, if, if what we want to do is to take the focus off of that and to move the meeting space to the middle of the mall, I just, you know, I personally don't support that because I think the great support from the community is to see something great happen with that Belk Facility, that it, that building itself is a great facility and is really set up for something like that. It's got higher ceilings, it has parking that's all the way around it, it's in a great position. On that lot, it's, it's got frontage from Statesville Boulevard and Jake Alexander Boulevard. The architects recommended outside of all the stakeholders' requests that that's where that space go. And personally, that's what I support and I think the community does as well, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I looked at the space need study just before I came and the Belk's building is identified for Department of Social Services. And the space that you are trying to put, the Agricultural Extension Agency and all of that, including the four spaces that I had recommended for meeting spaces, was determined for the Health Department. So I don't know what space need study you're looking at, but it's not the last one that came out.
Well, there was a space need study, then there was a mall master plan. And the master plan had a couple of different options. One option would be to use the Belk Facility as a meeting space and the other one in fact did, did use Health Department or DSS in that space as, as an alternate plan. So anyway, that's just what I had observed and you know, that's what, that's just personally what I'm for.
Is there copies of the thing we can look at, Mr. Manager? Of the approved plans? Is that online somewhere? I was trying to find it on my phone here. I thought I had some, some photos.
I'm looking. I mean, the big board is in my office if you want me to go get it.
Well, I'll make it easy on you. I withdraw my request because I know I don't have support for it. There's a hidden agenda in this whole thing and I, it's very obvious to me what's going on here and it's not what's best for the taxpayers.
Well, I appreciate your comments and, and we're willing to discuss the hidden agendas if, if you'd like to make those public.
I said I withdraw my request, that ought to be the end of it.
All right. Commissioner withdraws his request. Do any other commissioners have any other comments? Are there any hidden agendas that other commissioners would like to reveal? All right, hearing none. Do we, we don't need a motion to, to withdraw this, do we? Okay. Then we'll move on to item number six. Let's see, Commissioner Pierce passed out these printouts. And so Commissioner Pierce.
This is the kitchen design from our, from our architect for the outfit kitchen out at Ellis Park. I passed out her artist renderings of what the finished product would look like. As you can see, she was good enough to show you before and hopefully after the pictures. Met out there several months ago and met with staff and they showed us what they felt like was their requirements. And she was good enough to take all that down and, and give us the renderings here, which will show you what I think is a very modern kitchen. And I think it will add a lot to the facility out there that has long been passed over. But I'll let, I'll let her make her presentation on what the details are.
Well, good, welcome. Don, thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Chairman and County Commissioners, we do appreciate the opportunity to be before you. Appreciate Commissioner Pierce putting money into this year's budget and recognizing the need of the renovation of the kitchen and banquet hall. Just a little bit of history, you know, this, this is a community park. This banquet hall slash kitchen area is used every weekend, I mean, every weekend out of the year, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. So it's, it's, well, it's greatly utilized. It's not underutilized by no, no sense, but there are a lot of things that we can make it better for the community to be able to utilize. One thing I will point out, the Commissioner Pierce did not mention, it is a very time-sensitive program, not, process that we have in front of us, stating that this banquet hall is rented every weekend. We have carved out January and February. We did this back in July of this, well, shortly after the budget was approved because we can't, you know, come March, we've got weddings, we've got family reunions, we've got parties. I've got with me Natalie Morgan of Morgan Architectural Firm that can brief the board a little bit more. What we're asking of you tonight, of course, is a, a motion and a second for approval of the design. of the design so that we can move forward. She'll outline some of the time constraints that we have. It's not a large project, but it is time-consuming, and to get it through the proper channels to where, one, we can bring the bid process back to you, and then be able to get that approved and to begin work as shortly after January 1st as we possibly can. This time, I'd like for Natalie to come forward.
Hi, good evening, I'm Natalie Morgan, Morgan Architecture. I'm located here in Chinon Grove, and I'm a native here of Rowan County, so I guess I'm that generation you're seeking to make sure we come back and build businesses here, so that was exciting to hear that tonight. I just want to speak briefly and kind of keep this, just kind of the narrative of it kind of short, I mean, it's a basic kitchen renovation. So if you'll kind of look at your plans for a moment, if you'll flip to the sheet SK01 that has the plans, I believe that's your front sheet for most of you, you'll see there that there's a demolition on the bottom-left corner. There's quite a few appliances that are out in that room currently, and some of the conflicts that come in is public use to staff use. So a lot of the reprogramming of the space is mostly just to create kind of storage areas that are easily secured, but give flexibility and allow this to really act in a public way, because of the use and the high use of the, on the weekends. And the bottom-right proposed floor plan corner, that's the new layout, but I think what makes it easiest for most of us that do not look at drawings every day like myself is to be able to look at the 3D sheet on the, on this other page with all the 3D images. I'll just kind of walk you through the existing images. On the bottom of the sheet, you can see the existing kitchen facility, kind of residential unit refrigerators, our older wooden cabinets in there. These products have held up a long time, and they've kind of served their term. There is great need from just a sanitary standpoint, and the public come in and using the space to upgrade finishes and to allow some upgrades with utilities also as far as some electrical and plumbing in that, that area. You can see in the middle section, the middle drawings there, there's the proposed new configuration. What this does is it allows there to be kind of commercial-sized refrigerator and freezer in that space. The ice maker relocated everything, kind of very efficient plumbing-wise on the wall with the sink. It allows the staff with their classes that, a lot of them address kind of accessible users, to now have lower counters to address some of the accessible usage of the space to help, that was one of the things the staff raised as far as program. But it also allows there to be a little bit of a reconfiguration of the pantry that allows the staff to be able to secure things that they have for classes, things that the public doesn't need when they are in the space, and allow us to kind of accommodate the staff refrigerator and freezers in those areas where currently they're bolting things shut, relying on finding keys, and those kind of systems that allows us to simplify how they use that space. So, finishes will be upgraded, the flooring, that we're dropping in a new lay-in ceiling, just things like that will allow the space to be nice and clean and very public-friendly, but also specifying some products that will clean well and allow them to have good maintenance long-term. So, are there any other questions I could answer on the design?
I hadn't even thought about the accessibility inside. We have one of the nicest park facilities for handicapped folks in the outside, and I never thought about the inside, so, Mr. Pierce, I hope you take credit for that, too.
I don't.
Good job.
She's an architect.
Well, that's one thing, you know, when we do commercial upgrades like this, taking in those accessible users, but the staff has special programs in place that are for that user group, and so that's a lot of the need in the counter space in there and giving them multi-use of that area that allows that accessibility, and just kind of opens up opportunities for all the public that way, with that opening in the wall and how that counter can interact, so.
Natalie, also, I think we discussed in the scope of work is to carry the product that we put on the floor in the kitchen, all the way through into the new dining room, all the way to the entry, and at that same point in time, take care of the floor repairs that are plentiful out through there where the original, I guess, three-quarter hardwood flooring is, is broken down and, and needs to be replaced. So, once this is done, we'll have a complete, brand-new park facility out there, because the rest of it's already had deep floor covering put in it. I will address one thing we had discussed, dropping the ceiling out in the dining room, but because of the structure of the, it's an old schoolhouse, the windows go all the way to the ceiling, and there was no way to do that and, and secure those areas up above the ceiling. So Natalie's done an excellent job putting together all the different things that we could expect to happen. I like the fact that you've got a handicap-accessible kitchen sink area there that's made so that people can roll up underneath it and, and get to the sink instead of having to park sideways, so I applaud you on the design.
Thank you.
Now, the kitchen part, I'm very familiar with back through there. There was a wall, and then there was two rooms in the front, if I'm not mistaken, that was like a playroom, one of them was, and...
To the, to the left.
And...
Right, the scope of, the scope of this work does not include that.
Yes.
Okay, those, those are not being changed.
No, sir.
Here, where the current VCT tile is.
Okay.
We want, we want to remove that and repair the floors underneath and then put LVT back down, something that's no maintenance and it's waterproof, as opposed to the VCT tiles to continually be waxed.
Yeah, the scope of work mostly, if you look at the 3D images, the existing dining hall view, when you're looking at that wall in that space, that's mostly the kitchen that's behind that wall from the public space, and that was the scope of work, aside from the flooring that Mr. Pierce has addressed.
Just one question, just curiosity. On the front page that you gave us, says kitchen north, number three, is that, is that a hot water heater to the far left?
Yes, sir.
What is it? Okay.
It's inside of the current pantry right now, and that hot water heater has been replaced within the last year. So that is an existing hot water heater that's in great condition, that is one of the very few items that is remaining in the space. There will be upgrades to the electrical panel. There were quite a few things that we noticed and how systems were overloaded that we're addressing with some electrical upgrades, with how power's coming into that kitchen, that way it keeps that area kind of very secure and very fire-safe.
Well, first of all, I'm glad we got a hometown person working on this. Commissioner Pierce, thanks for getting a local architect for this, stuff we talk about all the time. Ellis Park's a great park, the director there is a great guy, Craig Farmer, I have to say that, he's my son's father-in-law, for the record. But they do a great job out there, and, and with the work that the parks did with the new handicap playground, this is really a shining park that we have in the county, and so, thanks, Commissioner Pierce, for your work on this. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the floor plan as shown and ask our architect to go out for bid.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right, and this is budgeted, so this is part of our annual budget, okay? All right, any further discussion?
I'd just like to reiterate that we'd like to thank Commissioner Pierce for getting this design. This is a great park. If you folks have not been out to Ellis, I've used it, it's great location, and now with these additions to it, it's just a wonderful facility, going to be a wonderful facility and park area for Rowan County for all kinds of kids and adults.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, Don, thank you. All right, we've come to the end, so we're going to move into closed session. I move the board now into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11 for a personnel matter. So if we could empty out as quickly as possible, we'll, we'll move into closed session. All right, we're out of closed session, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
If you ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.